Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson. Thank you. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Adam Peters.
Yes, sir, I've got a couple of-
The county commission back in session.
Yes, sir, a couple of items, some of these we'll have a little discussion if you want, if you don't, that's fine with me. Okay, item number one, inform the board of the letter from Triumph authorizing Kennedy to apply for the airport fuel farm was received on May thirteenth and I submitted draft application on May fifteenth. Both documents are attached. In the draft submission, the application asked for basically a little over a million dollars of Triumph funds to replace a thirty-year-old fuel farm and to purchase a brand-new backup generation fuel farm. Initially, FDOT was going to provide the funds for the backup generator, but then they realized they had overcommitted on the funds they had available, so FDOT is not providing any match. The match in the draft application is coming from the county eccentric. In this review by Triumph staff of the application I sent in, it said, "I need to approve the economic analysis and show the creation of ten to twenty jobs," or rewrite the application as a response to the maintaining equipment way to a local emergency action plan. Since the airport was used as a mega center for hurricane recovery, it seemed logical that the fuel farm is a component of our county's emergency action plan. The danger is, I got this from the staff, is that Triumph has yet to approve any projects as emergency action plans, so there's no precedent for what they, what to expect and what they are going to authorize. So I've asked Langton Consulting, who's now your NYPD people, your restore people, I've asked Langton Consulting to review my draft to see if they can find some additional analytical support. So the copy of the draft that you have will be revised and replaced with a final version, and I have a conference call this afternoon with Langton Consulting, so hopefully the next day or two we'll get something finished into Triumph. Number two, inform the board that Clay Kennedy and I participated in a series of meetings with FEMA and FDEP personnel regarding Alligator Point. I've informed the Commissioner Bold of the various meetings, as the board is aware, we are proceeding with rebuilding Alligator Drive in its current location. I want to remind the board and the public of three significant things that have been accomplishments of Hurricane Michael. One, FDEP is allowing us to rebuild the road and install or event under Hurricane Michael Burton's order, which is something we could not do after Hurricane Hermine. So that is a, that is a gain to the community. Two, CMC is assessing counting and securing as many parcels of land in and around it potentially right away as possible, so we have options in the future. Again, that's a gain from last time, we won't necessarily use them this time, but at least next time we will have some options. Three, the board authorized expenditure of thirty-five thousand dollars of local gas tax money to be spent on paving the temporary road. This will reestablish normal traffic patterns, we already spoke this morning, it's open and running as we speak, and I hope this reduces the number of road callouts to Alligator Point. The road, as it was paved on Friday, and opened two lanes for the first time since two thousand sixteen. I did authorize M Construction, I'm sorry, I did authorize additional expense related to the road. After consulting with Clay Kennedy, I directed M Construction to paint a W line, which you see in the photograph there, on the new asphalt, so it adds to define the driving lane. I do not have the final bill, but we saw more than thirty-five thousand dollars, because M Construction's original bid did not include a yellow line. At this time, we still plan to advertise in June for the permanent rebuilding of Alligator Drive and open bids on July sixteenth, board meeting. So the bid opening needs to be on the agenda for July sixteenth. Clay Kennedy, that'd be a board opening, a bid opening for Alligator Drive. I believe in an earlier meeting, I say this to Mr. Pfeiffer in the audience in case he's caught this, is that I talked about bid openings in June, when I meant to say bid advertising in June. It was always going to open in July, but I misspoke the last meeting and said bid opening, we should bid advertising in June, opening in July. So the bid opens will be in July sixteenth, board agenda. Clay Kennedy, as I said earlier, is on Alligator Point as we speak with the permitting side of U.S. Corps of Engineers, while FDIP has waived some of their permitting rules, the Corps of Engineers has not. The U.S. Corps of Representatives in the various meetings have been very supportive of the county, but we still need to get a permit from them. One change in the design the board needs to consider, and I'm sorry I don't have a photograph of this, because I just wasn't quick enough to get this done. One change in the design the board needs to consider is whether it wants to straighten out the sharp curve of the intersection of Tom Roberts and Alligator Drive. I recommend the curve be straightened out, and I believe the Alligator Point community, although I don't have a, didn't ask after anybody to give a community response, but I believe the community would like to be straightened out, the curve be straightened out also. But in order to do so, the county will need to build across a parcel land owned by the Alligator Point Water District and then continue at a diagonal across a southern part of one parcel, private parcel. Now, if we're going to do this, we need to have a lawyer involved, because, well, there's the curve there that we want to try and get rid of. It's a nice, it's a virtually ninety-degree curve there, and if we straighten it out, it'd be much easier and much softer. But we have to, we have to get an easement across Alligator Point property, so the water district's property, and then some sort of, you know, allocation across private property. And I would defer to the attorney, if y'all are interested in that, I think the attorney probably needs direction to work that out.
I'll definitely need authorization from the board to look into that matter.
So move? Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bold, second by Commissioner Jones. Master, discussion. Yeah, it had to be moved in and that'd help.
Yes, it would help.
A little bit.
Yes, yeah. Because the corner actually there is the most vulnerable part, that, that, that corner is perpendicular to two different directions of wave action, and so if we can move it inland, we're, we're saving ourselves future problems.
Plus, you ain't but, but two feet from the water, dude.
Yes, sir.
Look like.
How far inland would it actually wind up being?
Uh, it could be twenty or thirty feet, thirty or forty feet, I mean, it, it, I, I don't have a dimension, but I would say thirty feet. And what would happen, actually, the land, we would then put a stormwater retention pond on that side of the road, because, you know, we'd have to capture the water.
It's way behind the telephone pole, Ricky, way back behind it.
Yeah, so actually, the curve, I don't know, want to go back to the curve?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just- I'm sorry, clarify for the record, because the record's not really going to reflect these photographs very well. The intersection you're referring to, Alan's intersection of Alligator Drive and Tom Roberts Road on the east, correct?
West end of the, below that area.
But it's, but it is the, Tom Roberts intersects twice with Alligator Drive, this is the eastern intersection. Is that correct?
Yes, this is the eastern end of the intersection.
Okay, very-
Yes, the eastern end, yes.
Yes, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Peters.
The other one? I'm sorry, it's not really this good enough. Yeah, so that, that's a good photograph, so where's, where's, so we'd be coming, we'd be coming off the road right here, we'd be interfering with one private law coming right here. I think it's going to be a great benefit to the community if we get that worked out.
Okay, so have we acted to direct the attorney?
Play to the vote.
Well, we have a motion to second, but no vote.
Okay, y'all.
We have a motion to vote.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Thank you. Number three, airport update, board actually approved a task order number five for AVCON related to the bidding and construction phase of the airport access road, of which the bid will be open on June fourth. All expenses reimbursable by the grant, task order is attached, the board action on the task order.
So move. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, I just have two more items, and these are ones where there may be some discussion if you want to. Number four, restore update, I have been, I have been in consultation with Langton Consulting regarding restore projects. I had previously advised Langton that the Frank County had several funding proposals in front of the legislature, and the outcome of those proposals would affect how the county might want to spend restored dollars. Well, the outcome from the legislature was terrible. No funding was provided for dune restoration or for any of the other capital improvement requests the county submitted. At this time, I see the county as having two large infrastructure projects that need attention, and I parenthetically say, based on Hurricane Michael, we certainly have many other infrastructure problems. One is dune restoration. The beach and dune system is the first line of defense from storms, and in many places in the county, not just on Alligator Point or St. George Island, but including Caribou Beach, it needs rebuilding. In my discussion with Langton, they believe a dune restoration project would be a viable project. The county, and let me say parenthetically also, we asked for twenty million dollars for dune restoration in Frank County, we received zero dollars. So we did not get any help from any outside sources for dune restoration. I've given Langton, the county has currently eight point seven billion dollars of restore funds at Treasury. I'd given Langton a rough budget of four million dollars of dune restoration project, because I wanted to save some money for a second infrastructure project, being Alligator Point Road Protection Project, which would be rebuilding a mile of beach in front of the exposed road. I'm expecting that before construction ever started in Alligator Point, we'd have another allocation of BP funds, so the amount of restore funds available for Alligator Point Road Protection could be as much as five billion dollars in two thousand and twenty. Road protection program will still need additional funding, and it's my expectation we would see matching funding through the DEP Beach Erosion Control Program, for which Alligator Point has previously been funded. At this time, Lang, if you want to do dune restoration, that's something we need to talk about. At this time, Langton recommends we begin the NYPD process for planning grants. One planning grant would be to develop and plan a county-wide dune restoration project, because other than saying we have a proposed budget, there are no plans for what we would do. And this, this is my idea, although I have talked briefly with MRD, who's our coastal engineers. At a minimum, the plan is to provide sand fencing and dune plants for beach areas around the county, and that's the length of approximately sixteen miles. But a planning grant would develop the details of how much fencing, how many plants, and whether other dune enhancements could be done for the budget. This dune restoration, so it includes sixteen miles, which includes St. George Island residential areas, the Caribou Beach area, Alligator Point, and Ball Point. It cannot include Dog Island, because Dog Island is a coastal barrier resource area, or Cobra, and restore funds cannot be spent in Cobra Zone. So I'd say this also parenthetically, that Dog Island has a very dim future. It suffered tremendous erosion during Hurricane Michael, and unless the volunteers and the citizens out there can do it on their own, they're not going to get any federal funds. And it's, it's going to be a problem for, for future, future time on Dog Island. Langton assures me that we can amend the NYPD for planning grants at any time, so we are not locked into one-time submission. Obviously, the board should not submit a planning grant for dune restoration if it does not want to go through a construction phase, so the board should have some discussion on this. The board may also want to add other infrastructure planning grants. Langton has suggested a deadline for June fourth for the board to get, make a decision on restore planning grants, and then Langton would begin the process of developing the NYPD. In a draft timetable, Langton would present a draft NYPD to the board on June eighteenth. Once the board is satisfied with the projects, Langton would begin the required forty-five-day public comment period before being submitted to Treasury. They believe it will take Treasury six months to approve an NYPD, so if we start it in June, we ought to have this thing approved sometime in January of two thousand and twenty.
Play to the vote.
And, and the idea is that we would, your planning grants would go and you would hire a consultant, you know, potentially, I say potentially, because you've got to advertise this. MRD, our coastal engineers, would, would be hired to create a planning, you know, the, do the planning grant for a dune restoration project. They experienced this, that'd be logical, but you could hire somebody else. If you had other things, if you want to do other infrastructure grants, you'd hire an engineering firm to do those sort of things. So, I mean, the money wouldn't be given to Langton Consulting, you would hire some, you know, competent firm in the area that you want to plan.
I'm with you, got a cold day.
Well, an estimate, an estimate, and Langton's already done this, and I appreciate their, their involvement, they, they estimate for a planning grant for a dune restoration is between a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that. So it's not, not, you know, millions of dollars, but a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty. And the reason it's expensive, because you are dealing with sixteen miles of coastal shoreline that you got, you have to go personally and do some inspections on and, and, you know, make a specific plan of action. And I will say it's very possible that some parts of the coastline would get different treatment than other parts. And to give you an idea why, specifically we didn't mention one thing, dune restoration, you think dune restoration, okay, we need to bring some sand in here. Well, for sixteen miles of sand, and I don't have all the numbers in my head, I apologize, but it's basically forty dollars a cubic yard, and I had MRD do a quick assessment. If we were to build some minor sand dunes over sixteen miles, we need eighteen million dollars worth of sand alone. That's how expensive beach-compatible sand is. Well, we're not, we're not in that market, we don't have that kind of money. So sand dunes are going to have to be built with the sand that's on the beach, with sand fencing, and, you know, let it blow in there and build up. There might be a few select areas you could pump, you could truck sand in, but this is, this is going to be a system where it's going to take cooperation with the homeowners and the community at large to rebuild our, our sand.
Now, this is part of the construct, uh, the consultant's job is to define what we need to do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's a hundred, that's, that's a hundred thousand, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And if there's different things, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't ask permission.
Come here.
If there's certain things that we, that they say we need to do here, but you may want to do something over here that's going to work better, then, then that's what, that's what their job is, is to determine exactly what we need to do. Knowing that we don't have eighteen million dollars, just go buy sand and throw that on the beach.
Right, right.
I mean, that's what their job is, is put a plan, an active plan together that will get us where we want to be for, for the money that we have in the budget.
Correct.
Well, would that hundred and some thousand come out? Who will pay that?
The restore funds, it'd be a restore fund.
Okay, well, would we have to pay it upfront?
Yes, but it's reimbursable from Treasury a hundred percent, so, yeah, so, I mean, but a hundred thousand is not a big cash.
We have it.
It'd be, you know, probably be, and I'm saying this without knowing who it's going to be, you know, it's going to take several months to develop that kind of plan, so you, you know, get invoices once a month, thirty thousand dollars a month to three months, I mean, it's not a big cash flow.
I thought that's what the planning grant was for.
Yeah, but, but planning grant is reimbursable.
Give the money upfront, give the planning grant, pay, put the money back, is that what you're saying? I make a motion that we move forward with this project, if the board is still ready to move forward with this dune restoration problem, probably. I mean, you know, as we talked before, Alan and the board agreed at that time, that, you know, this is a lot of the tax base for the county also, especially on St. George Island and other places in the county. And if we don't protect that, and we have another storm that wipes it out, then our average open tax base is going to go way down, so I think it's an habitation program to try to protect that, along with our economy, with the tourists coming to our beaches and different things. I mean, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
To give you an how explosive it is, I almost hesitate to say this, I was only, I was, two nights ago during the full moon, I was on the east end of St. George Island and down in the state park, and the middle of the state park's narrower with less dune vegetation. But you can now stand on the beach on St. George Island in the state park and look across St. George Island and see headlights on US ninety-eight in East Point. I mean, it's that flat and that exposed.
I second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, it was already second by Commissioner Jones.
No, I never said-
You did, second by Commissioner Burt, okay.
I have some for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion?
Alan, could we, in your, in your thing here, you're saying that the county authorize a list of projects?
Yes.
So could we also do some, we've already mentioned it and put in our NYPD, the county did, could we also do the stormwater for the commercial district on the island?
That's another example where you do a planning grant, because we, we don't have to know what, what it would be, so you would hire an engineering firm to give you, yes, do an assessment of what the stormwater plan would be. And then if, if it's something, you know, assuming it's a fixed number, then you go back to restore and get a construction grant, that's correct. So planning, planning, that's why I say there may be other things that you all know from infrastructure standpoint, we need to develop a plan for, now's the time to start those projects.
Well, is this going to take care of the, this, the dunes, you're building back dunes?
Yes, sir.
What about on, what, what, what we're going, we still got to protect that road down there in Alligator Point, what, what's going to happen there?
Well, that, that is a, a separate problem, because the dunes, you can't have dunes unless you have a beach, and there's no beach down there in front of that road. So that's why, again, Commissioner, this is your money, and I, and I don't want to act like I have a better idea of how it to be spent to protect the public interest than you all do. But right now, you have eight point seven billion dollars of restore money, and so I'm saying let's use an adequate amount of money for dune restoration countywide, but saving money that I still believe a beach needs to be built down there. And I think there's two funding components to build the beach, which is restore, some restore money matched with DEP money, that doesn't solve the, we still got to answer one more question, that's why I'm holding off on beach nourishment. Somebody has to maintain that beach, we have to have the fund to maintain it, there's no point building a beach if you can't maintain it. And that maintenance discussion needs to take place over the next few months. The nice thing about the beach restoration, we don't need a planning grant for that, we know exactly how to do that, we've already paid for that. So there isn't a timeline to plan a, a planning grant, that'll take, if you, if you agree to go through beach nourishment, we'll actually get a contract out with MRD, but we know what that beach nourishment program looks like, we know how it works, we know all the parts to it. So we don't need to start a planning grant for beach nourishment now, but if you want to do that, it's a discussion that you all need to have with the community about how you're going to pay for the maintenance, because that's still, you know, several hundred thousand dollars a year, need to be escrowed apart. Because using the numbers I had from two years ago, an eight-million-dollar project, you need to replace the, you need a planner replacing half the sand, golly, I already forgot the numbers, every four years? Every eight years, and so you need to develop two, two million dollars a year, I believe, or every four years, yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, we need to have escrowed essentially for dune restoration in a perpetual fashion. So where's that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to come from? I'm not here to answer that, I'm not even here to start that question, but that question has to be answered.
It going to come from the people down there?
Well, Commissioner, that, somewhere it has to come from, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Is that where you're coming from?
So-
But to me, that's, that's a different discussion.
So as we're addressing Mr. Jones's comments about the stormwater retention over there on the island, you would do a planning grant, but then, how would you fund this if you're going to set aside four million dollars to try to do this beach nourishment? Where will we get the money, I mean, can we do his planning and then wait till we get more allocations to do the construction of it?
Yeah, yeah.
That depends on how it works out with timetables, but yeah, I just, I want to, I want to make sure we restore as advantageous for all of us, I want to make sure we take it very good.
Yeah, but you're going to, yes, yes, the planning, the purpose is that you get a million and a half dollars a year essentially from restore, so by two thousand and twenty, maybe we're not ready for beach nourishment. So maybe we do stormwater on the island, I mean, I don't really know yet.
Okay.
But yes, the idea that you do it sequentially, yes.
Yeah, that's a big problem in front of that store with that water.
That's a big problem in the whole commercial district, yes.
Fills up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Alan, can you describe, define the difference between beach nourishment and dune restoration?
Well, I'm making a decision that probably isn't written in the book, so if there's a better description, I'll defer to that definition. Essentially, a dune restoration is you're building dunes upon a surface that's already above sea level. With beach restoration, or you're, you're, you got to build a beach first. I mean, you can have, you can have a beach without dunes, but you can't have a dune without a beach.
Exactly.
And does it, if you're, let's just theoretically, you're doing dune restoration, is that pumping-
No, no, no.
From the seaward, landward?
That's beach restoration, when you start pumping, that's beach restoration.
I see, so dune restoration is trucking-in type?
Could be trucking, because it's a much, much smaller amount, and of course, it's also a much, much longer distance. And I won't say that you couldn't do truck some sand in, but the number I gave you, again, forty dollars a cubic yard, eighteen million dollars for sand alone, we don't have a budget for that. So we're going to have to look for other things, and I, and I won't mislead people, this dune restoration may be a private, public-private partnership where we provide materials and the homeowners go out there and put it out there. I don't have any idea what the scope of the project is, I don't have any idea until we do a planning grant.
I know that I seen where they're putting the sand in, in Mexico beaches, a ton, is that pretty white sand? Is that, did they dump that in, or did they push that up off?
No, they dumped it, now that, they got money from emergency beach burn, because they had so many structures. This, and we're going to look at emergency beach burns on Alligator Point, I haven't, I haven't talked to you all about this, because there, there's a possibility, if you have structures that are going to be damaged within a five, in a five-year storm event, five years, and then you might be able to get an emergency beach burn. Well, most of our structures on St. George Island are not at risk for a five-year storm. There are, place on Alligator Point, they might be, and on Mexico Beach, they were. So we're looking to see if we can do some emergency beach burn, but what you're seeing on Mexico Beach, that's, that's, that's an emergency beach burn.
Well, when they put it to a category five, that helped them out a lot better, because it wasn't four when they done it at five, because homeowners get their deduction back on their insurance too, because the insurance company's, is upset about it.
Yeah, so it helps, but dune restoration, to answer Commissioner Bold's question, you know, again, we don't have a plan, but basically, it's, it's, it's sand fencing, the wind action, I mean, it's something that's going to help over time. So if we have a bad hurricane next year, we may not have made any progress, but if we have three or four years without a bad storm, this sand fencing works, ladies and gentlemen. The county, Mark Yerich and I installed sand fencing in the middle of the island ten years, twenty years ago, and that, we uncovered that fencing after Michael, I mean, it had been buried by six feet of sand, I mean, it works. You've got to put it in, you've got to angle it right against the prevailing wind, you get in there every six months, you've got to raise it up, but it works.
Then, real quick, Mr. Chairman, then we try to do an emergency burn down there at Alligator Point?
We tried, and they, and they turned us down, because I tried to do an emergency burn in front of the road, and they said it was not cost-effective. But now, I'm going to go back and revisit areas just outside of the road where maybe they would have accepted that. Like around, a Chip Morrison example.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right, so let me tell, I'll, I'll be telling Langton, we're looking at sand dunes and stormwater, if you have other ideas, though, they will be here on June, they have a deadline of June fourth. So if the next meeting you all come up with some other planning, infrastructure things you want to look at, we'll bring it up next, next time, or Michael Morone will, because I won't be here.
So we, so we are including the stormwater on the island?
I'm presuming you are, I mean, you brought it up, yeah.
Did we modify, we should have another motion, because you've already voted, the motion was just to move forward with a possible dune restoration plan, was, Christian Jones, you want to make that motion for stormwater?
I make a motion to add the stormwater on St. George Island Business District to this NYPD process we're doing.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones to add for, for St. George Island, second by Parrish and Master. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, number five is-
What about the rest of them, 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 care bills already?
Yes, sir, mine, yes, what the dune restoration will cover everybody, Caribou Beach, Alligator Point.
Yeah, okay.
Just go get the Caribou Beach, that we mentioned out of a couple of meetings ago about the Caribou Beach.
Now, let me tell you, Commissioner, and this is something that's sort of for debate at some point, and I, I use this as a bad example. It's possible St. Teresa, which has had dune erosion also, won't be eligible, because one of the components we haven't talked about, and I'd say it now, is that maybe dune restoration is available for those areas that have public access. St. Teresa don't really have public access, so we're going to spend public money protecting dune systems that are public and needs to have public access. And so I just say that there may be some beach areas, the final analysis is that St. Teresa won't be eligible, because there's no public access down there.
Well, they'll be like Dog Island, they have to do it themselves then, right?
Yeah, I mean, we'll just see, we'll see, that's, that may be, that ultimately will be a public policy question for you all to answer. Dog Island, you're prevented by federal law, you can't spend dollars out there, but St. Teresa, you know, I just say that.
Where are their dunes in St. Teresa?
Well, they, they have a beach out there.
Where at?
In front of those houses that you can't get to.
Right there, you pass Turkey Fort and come on down where them little mailboxes at?
Yeah.
It's some there, and you go down to the, where the old Camp Brown used to be, or the store, or some right, it's one there, and on around the curve, there's another, from Leonard's Landing down, there's a little beach right in there.
Yeah, yeah.
But they've never had sand dunes.
Okay, but they're houses there, so I-
Very few.
There's a little beach, but there's no sand.
Yeah, very few sand dunes down on that end.
Well, I guess, I would just, so the whole county covered, that's my thing.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, except for public lands, so St. George Island State Park and St. Vincent, we're not trying to protect those.
The state of the bed, right?
Well, I presume so, I mean, that's, that's, they're, they're state property, and they need to get their own state-
They got a gate, now do that.
Yes.
They got a gate, though they, we can't send no trucks in there, they got a gate.
We wouldn't be putting sand, they have, I'm sure they have their own restoration project they're working on.
Okay.
Okay, item number five.
We can vote it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We can vote on it.
You voted. Okay, item number five, consideration of other funding sources of infrastructure, and this is a brand-new project topic, and I apologize for springing on you all, but I got in the mood after four, and I thought let's just do five, too. Consideration of other funding sources of infrastructure, through my career with the county, most funds for capital improvement projects come from outside funding sources, being state and federal grants. Then, when the Restore Act was approved, Restore is identified as a funding source, but Restore is a one-time allocation of funds. Admittedly, the allocation will ultimately go to some twenty-one million dollars over fifteen years, but once the twenty-one million dollars is spent, Restore is over. So I oppose the board whether it should consider developing other funding sources, so the county is not completely reliant on outside funds for things it needs. I'm certainly talking about increasing the TDC taxes for infrastructure needs, and my objective is to develop a funding source to help maintain the county's dune system and for potential beach restoration projects. I really am concerned that with the damage Hurricane Michael did to Frank County beaches and what this means to the county when a future hurricane hits. I understand the legislation to allow the county commission to vote one cent with a supermajority vote of the board, if the board, for one cent. If the board wants to go two cents, it would have to go to referendum, and that's what you, what happened a few years ago and was turned down. One cent would generate about five hundred thousand dollars of revenue for infrastructure projects. Again, Commissioner, I realize it's brand-new to you all, I apologize for springing on you, but I just thought the time was right to talk about, you know, the future of this county.
They, well, the tourists, they need to charge it. I don't know, they the one, they coming here and using it, I mean-
This is an idea that I brought up, I hadn't talked to-
That's my, but that's just my opinion, on one man.
I don't have, the TDC may object, I don't have, I haven't had Commissioner Jones as chairman of TDC, I, I don't know what other opinions you can say.
I mean, there ain't nothing wrong with us talking about it, if they want it.
We could add another opinion to the taxes, put it on there, on bed taxes for beach nourishment.
Well, yeah, and infrastructure, there are things, and I'll give you another example. The county spent some money, and we had a lot of volunteer labor fifteen to twenty years ago building all the dune walkovers on St. George Island, that was on volunteers. We are all a lot older now, some of those dune walkovers need to be replaced. I don't know that we're going to get volunteers to go out there and rebuild those things. And with inmate crews, you don't have inmate labor. So as those dune walkovers fail, you know, as they age terribly during the sun, you're going to have to replace those things. You may end up having to hire a contractor, and that's going to cost money, and where's that coming from?
Well, do the vote want to think about this, or y'all want to vote?
I just told you, that one cent will do it all, put it on there, and nothing for that.
Play to the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the county attorney to research this and have the chairman of TDC, Mr. Jones, discuss it with them and come back to us with a recommendation as, as to how this one cent can be allocated for infrastructure and infrastructure only. Or can that be done, I don't know.
I said that that motion-
The intention is good to use it for the infrastructure, but can we do it in that manner, because there seems to be a ten percent limitation in some things that you can do. I mean, I, I, I want to make sure if you, if we vote, sit here and vote a tax on somebody that it's used for the, the intended purpose and not used for other purposes, but for the intended purposes that the vote votes on, so I'd like to make that motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Yep, that sounds good.
Second by Commissioner Jones, let me ask you a question, how much we taxing on the TDC?
Two cents.
Two percent.
We tried to go to four a while back and they voted it down, but one cent and let people put it in the paper, what exactly for? It will be taxing your people from the county, it'll be taxing your people coming in staying.
Right.
To build the beach back up, that's about the only way you're going.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can say this, and I feel pretty comfortable saying it, I think if we, if we do go forward with it, and it's something we can legally do, I think we need to come up with a list of these is what we plan to do with it in an numerical order, so people are assured- So people are assured that that's what's gonna happen with these extra dollars. So I would be comfortable with that. But I, I'll be discussing the same thing with the TDC board on your behalf.
Right, and you sitting on the board, you make sure it's putting a different funding for nothing but for that.
After we find out the legal.
Yeah, we can do it. Not mixed in the middle of other TDC money set off to the side in a different account.
Yeah, you're good.
All right, you already vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
That's another mark board?
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Mike C. McDonald, county coordinator.
I'm gonna be in detention for the rest of the day. Item number one, at your May seventh meeting, I presented some items from Capital Area Community Action Agency that required board action to authorize spending of the donated funds and certain requests. One of those requests, which the board approved, was a five thousand dollar payment from the donated funds to Community Action to transfer ownership of one of the camper travel trailers units to a fire victim who preferred the camper travel trailers she was currently living in instead of a permanent mobile home. This resident currently resides at a local RV park. Attorney Schuler will participate in the transfer and the agreement. Mr. Tim Centers, Community Action, in an email states that he underestimated the appraised value of that camper travel trailer, which is supported by a document from Florida Georgia Mobile RV Service. So instead of five thousand, the purchase price would be ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Centers also stated in his email that DOE and federal rules will not let Community Action liquidate an asset below fair market value. Is the board willing to pay the ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for this purchase, which is still less than the forty thousand for permanent mobile home?
Yep, I make a motion because it's saving, still saving us thirty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters. Do I get a second?
I'll second his motion, but I have a question.
Okay, I got second discussion.
Is this a lady that possibly did not have her own property? Is that kind of what, do you know that?
That I don't know, but.
You know what I mean? She just.
Commissioner Masters, he knows more than I do.
Yeah, she had, she was renting the property, but she owned her own trailer. But when it, when the trailer caught a fire, the guy was renting to her, said he wasn't no more gonna rent no more to her. So she had to move it to where we said.
The RV park?
Right.
Yeah.
So, I guess, no, she didn't own her own property, but the rental was hers, so.
We're trying to consistently give people the very best we can do. That's why I was asking.
Yes, sir.
Well, this money, is it coming out of?
The donated funds.
Donated funds.
Yeah.
Yes.
It saves us thirty thousand dollars still.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I just don't want the people to think we taking it out of everyone.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
Uh, the side note, one of the, the trailers from Community Action was actually delivered last Thursday and set up. Uh, having addressed where that is, I can tell you, you guys can drive by and look at it. And then there's another one that's gonna be delivered this Thursday and set up. And hopefully a third one within the next couple of weeks from now. Okay, so they're moving forward with their units. All right?
Yeah, but you know this moonlight, the, what the name?
Deborah.
Deborah by her prices, but when me and you met with that man, he said, when he got old, he was, I thought he said he, he got a better deal with one, one, one owner.
He did. He doesn't have.
One manufacturer.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. He can negotiate directly with someone, whereas Deborah is forced to go through the bidding process because of CDBG.
And not only that, if I might, Mr. Chairman, not only that, it's going through CDBG, it has to be energy efficient, it has to be star rated and all this. Where what Mr. Centers is doing doesn't have to go through that process. And that's what differs in the price.
They have stranded.
Yes.
Wait, it, it had to be, it had to be for it coming here?
Well, it just has to be rated for, for hurricanes for.
Yeah.
Cause that's our.
Zone three.
Yeah.
Us and Gulf County Commissioner.
Yeah, so it, it's getting the same thing. It's just one coming in the front door, one coming in the back door.
Okay.
So we can't, they can't come in here without. Go ahead.
Item number two, inform the board that I met with, with Mr. Rick Harder of Ecology and Environment Incorporated on Thursday, May ninth to discuss a shoreline habitat and resilient coast analysis project for Apalachicola Bay. Mr. Harder, along with Apalachicola, Apalachia Regional Planning Council staff, has done extensive research and gathered much data for this project. The main purpose of this project is to identify and prioritize shoreline segments for restoration. Commissioner Parrish, who became aware of this project, has expressed some concerns, such as any oysters that may grow on the new living shoreline will be consumed, make someone sick, and cause additional regulations on the industry. The commission also wanted assurances that there would still be available locations for cast netting and other shoreline fishing activities. Both Mr. Harder and Mr. Chris Rito, ARPC's executive director, asked that the county submit a request for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, a, a community planning technical assistance grant that would allow Franklin County to hire ARPC to assist, assist with the project. As part of their responsibilities, ARPC will hold a series of five stakeholder meetings to share the analysis, discuss how shoreline habitats may be used to strengthen high priority shoreline segments where critical public infrastructure is at risk for future erosion, and address stakeholder concerns similar to Commissioner Parrish's concerns. A quote from Mr. Chris Rito's report to his board states, and I quote, "The next step in the program are to finalize the results of the analysis and, and submit a report to FDEP with the results of the analysis. While no funds or grants have been awarded to implement the project, there is traction to seek them, especially considering the protection afforded to infrastructure along the coast." The deadline for this request was Monday, May thirteenth, so I submitted the funding request to DOE. Board action to ratify my submission of, of the nineteen, nineteen thousand five hundred request for the TA grant.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, discussion. Yeah, yeah, that stuff, you have to be careful. You got to worry about it, but they go in them clothes there at the old thing. That, they're like right up by the channel. One side was over one side clothes. But I've been guilty to myself going on the side and get a boat.
But.
I didn't say that.
Yeah. You didn't say that, Mr. Chairman. But, you know, this, this is a thing where we, where it works, because then we'll be promoting, we'll be promoting this project. So, you know, once we're attached to it, you can't just separate.
Mainly what they're talking about is between East Point and Caribou, what's running down next to the highway that is now washed out.
Yeah.
Y'all fighting back and forth, and I did too yesterday trying to get back and forth.
I know, that's what I'm gonna bring up. Michael, please call somebody to, I says, if they can't get underway, it's knocking windshield's out, people blowing their tires out. This is getting, it's too, it's going, it's too long.
Yeah.
Taking too long to fix that rule.
Yeah, I mean, they need another crew. Roberts and Roberts have been there, been done.
Yeah.
But, yeah, Mr. Harder, it was willing to sit with each of you. He has a small, short presentation. I'm not sure where I'm bringing it to the board meeting. He has a presentation he'd like to make with each of you to explain the project further, you know, if, if so decided. Let me know. I have his contact information. I'll set up a meeting for you all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
All right, item three, this is what we have, uh, up on the screen. I attended ARPC's regular meeting on Thursday, May sixteen, where ARPC staff unveiled the Apalach, unveiled Apalachian line. This website includes the first version of Franklin County's new GIS map, which we're paying for. I will demonstrate some of the features of the GIS map. If you see what, one of the things that was very, very impressive is the water system. And so this is St. George Island right here, and it actually has, it'll tell you where all the septics and the wells are on this map. And have no fair Alligator Point, they've done the same thing for you guys. Uh, you go to this map. If, you could just review to the, the legend, it'll tell you where they are, um, and, you know, and it tells you where some of the water lines are running for there. And so, um, they should have the final version of this map ready to go with its own domain name. It's still on a test website. And that should be ready, I think, the first of next month, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, slightly colorblind, but you see, some of the lines here is from the Alligator Point Water District. And of course, there's also a future land use map in there, um, with, again, with the legend, letting you know, you know, what each color represents. And if I go back to the main site, which is right here, there's, there's a land use, demographics, water system, a future land use map. And then there's a series of other counties you can find the same information. So just wanna let you guys know, that's where some of your money has been going, to ARPC for the GIS map.
This will enhance some of our building and planning proposals and.
Oh, yes, sir.
Like we did today.
Yes, and so it'll, there'll be a link to the county's website as soon as it's completed. Okay?
It's also got a, uh, like he's showing a regional component. Michael, click on that explore, at the, the word explore.
That?
And it'll bring up, yes, it'll bring up for the whole region, different things that highlight our region. From turtle stuff to the interstate to historic different parts of the, the counties involved in this region. They're really tying it all together and that.
So if you hit, I think, beyond I-ten, not, not to, you know, say much language, and, and the contract that Attorney Schuler is reviewing to send to them. If we wanna get more specific about certain things from our map, that's where that money comes into, that contract comes in and we're working on with that. Um, I think there's places at East Point they have highlighted, blah, 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 tell you what.
Mr. Chairman, wait, I thought that contract was over with with ARPC. Is there something else that needs to be done with it?
I thought, they said that they're waiting for you and their legal team to agree on the wording before it's signed. That's what they said last week, Thursday, but.
Yeah, because I pointed, like, ask them. I thought it was signed too.
I'll double check my files. My memory's telling me that I paid the comments and sent it up to them. Did they reply with further information or something?
Maybe they were.
No, no, they were acting like they were waiting on.
I'm, I'm, somebody's right, somebody's wrong. I'll figure it out.
Maybe they were referring to their legal team and we misunderstood, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, while we're talking about this, if, if you'll give me just a minute. Uh, at ARPC meeting, we also had, uh, several different entities, uh, also give letters of support for interchange on, off of I-ten on to sixty-five. Since then, I've also got a letter from the Civic Club on the island that's been submitted to Secretary Gainer. And I had the opportunity to talk with Quentin Eastburg from ARPC staff about pursuing it in other directions to try to make sure in some way that it might work out, uh, with a build grant through the federal government. So it, it's being actively pursued. And what's really encouraging is you had a room full of people that they were wanting to talk about it. So we haven't got it yet, but it's moving in a positive direction. I want to be sure to report that to you guys, because I serve at, at y'all's pleasure, for y'all, so.
Right, because we need one from sixty-seven too, because we never make it to sixty-five to get up there.
Lack of distraction. Okay, if I may, item four, inform the board that it appears that Florida legislature did not approve any funding for the fire sprinkler system for the armory. Been discussing other possible funding sources with Mr. Curren, Mr. Pierce, and Ms. Griffith. The Florida legislature approved a hundred thousand dollars last fiscal year, and the tourist development council has designated a hundred thousand dollars their own for this project. The total cost of the project is estimated at three, between three sixty and four hundred thousand dollars. There is some concern that if we don't spend last year's legislative appropriate funds, we may, we may lose those funds. And in addition, the state's fire marshal office will be then, demand an immediate installation of the sprinkler system or close the armory. Mr. Curren had advised me that there is currently another open special category grant cycle from the Division of Historical Resources, but the submission deadline is June first. Will the board authorize with Curren to submit an application for the current grant and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary application documents? And are there any other funding sources that the staff should consider? I would say this, as you all are considering that TDC increase, if it's appropriate, this is one thing that would really, really help commissioners.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to let, uh, Mr. Curren submit an application.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Bo, all in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
For information, Department of Environmental Protection Division of State Land has informed county staff that the land use plan for the Fort Coon's Armory and the surrounding property will expire in less than ninety days. Mr. Curren will be working on an updated plan for submission before the deadline. I will make sure I send you a copy of that plan when it's completed. Uh, Mr. Michael Kennett, Park Services Specialist at Orman House State Park, has informed me that Orman House Historic State Park is partnering with Hillside Coalition of Laborers on an application for state grants to rebuild the quarters at the edge of the property that were used by the servants and slaves and do crucial restoration work to the Orman House and its mule barn. Once completed, this project would allow the story to be told about the many African-Americans who contributed to Apalachicola's nineteenth-century prosperity. Board action to authorize a letter of support for the Orman House Historic Park grant application.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, I mean, Commissioner Bo.
Get your hat.
Commissioner Parrish.
Commissioner Bo.
Bo. Second by Commissioner Jones, in other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
Uh, item seven, inform the board that with the ending of the legislative session, I reached out to Attorney Daniel Cox on possible dates to schedule the ethics class. Attorney Cox has offered June first, fifteenth, and twenty-ninth as possible dates. He prefers June fifteenth, but that, the board would have just returned from Florida Association of Counties Annual Conference that previous Friday, which is the fourteenth. Board action to select a date for your ethics class.
Play it to the Bo.
I make a motion, we select twenty-ninth.
I'll second that motion, but I have some discussion.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, go ahead.
Uh, Michael, I, I realize and, and value our volunteers and we have many in the county. But we also have many in the county that they might not have to take an ethics class every year. But I think it would behoove the county to find a way to get them at least into one ethics class. Since they do fall under sunshine law, specifically the TDC board, any other boards that are under the county. Uh, uh, they at least need to take this class once. They might not can attend on the twenty-ninth. Maybe we can set them up for the online class, because there's offered several ways, but PNZ Advisory Board. I just think it'd be good for everyone to take an ethics class at least once.
Okay, I'll send a letter out to each member of all our volunteer board, or to, yeah, each member of our volunteer boards. And let them know, that's what we're doing. And give them the choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in poll, that pass, you know?
And one more thing, Commissioner, while I was sitting there, Mr. John Solomon of TDC, you know, we showed that, one of the, the commercials, videos. When he left here, he actually got a message from the villages saying that they're coming up with a busload to visit the area after they've seen the video. See, it works.
Good.
Yay. I love it.
All right, next on the agenda. Mike Schuler.
I have no report for the board this morning. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Attorney Schuler, if I may. Attorney Schuler, um, I should have asked you before today, and I let it slip my mind, just a couple of things on my mind lately, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
There has been a lot of discussion with me from residents specifically of South Bay Shore Drive.
Yes, sir.
In East Point, uh, about, I know at one time that the county had lowered the speed limit there and it got raised back up. Uh, specifically though, the things that they were asking about are trying to get some kind of, uh, signs for the no-through trucks actually on Franklin Boulevard and Highway ninety-eight, because the current signs are actually after the trucks have already turned.
Yeah.
A, a, and there was an additional, uh, discussion and ask from some of the residents about the potential for speed bumps. But I wanted to, I figured that would be a legal discussion. That's why I wanted to wait and bring it up now. I want to get your way in on those at least preliminarily.
I think changing the signs and the location of the signage is actually an excellent idea, because I've noticed that myself. By the time someone sees the, there's no-through trucks.
Too late.
They're, you know, it's too late, as you say. As far as the speed humps, it is frankly against county policy to put speed humps. I mean, you haven't adopted a written policy. We, we in fact, I think, have tried it. I think the last time was over at the entryway to St. James Bay. And it was just a complete, uh, uh, failure of the intent of the speed humps. And there's the risk of liability to the county from damage to people's vehicles. So it's been the informal policy of the board not to, uh, install speed humps. But I, I'll certainly can check with the, the engineer. There's, it's been many years since we've looked at that issue. And it may be that there are some other options available for the board, uh, that, that could be considered. So I'll, I'll make a note of that and I'll, I'll research it and report back to the board.
Okay, would we have to ask DOT to put those signs on their right-ofways?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, I would like to direct you to try to find that out too, sir.
Yes, sir, I will find out.
And, uh, yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, just, what is the board's policy with regard to rumble strips as opposed to speed humps?
We have not installed the rumble strips either. We, we've looked at it before, but I don't think we actually moved forward. But that, that would be an item to be reviewed. It, it's, there, there are a couple of competing public interests that, that have to be considered whenever you put the rumble strips into a residential area. And, and those need to be looked at carefully. whenever you put the rumble strips into a residential area, and, and those need to be looked at carefully. But that will definitely be one of the items that's looked at, Commissioner.
All right. That's it. Next on the agenda will be Commissioner comment.
Um, Michael, can you show the, uh, the restored road again for, I just want to show. Commissioners, I just wanted to just bring you up to date on, uh, the top coating we did for that, uh, arched out road there at Alligator Point. Um, I, first of all, I just wanted to thank the commissioners for your confidence in voting for that thirty-five thousand dollars that we spent to top coat that road. What you see there is a, a widening of the road to twenty-two feet wide, and that's a one-inch application of asphalt with a center line. And then we were able to remove those stoplights to save the county over three thousand dollars a month. And all of this was done as a team effort, not only here, our commission, our board, but our executive staff were just together. And also, I wanted to thank Emery Mayfield for the work that he and his crew did on such a timely basis and that put everything together within a week. I can tell you that the comments from the folks at Alligator Point are extremely praiseworthy, very complimentary. Uh, one lady said she got to church ten minutes earlier than she normally does, and things like that that just make the quality of life so special. Thank you for your confidence, and we appreciate you doing this.
Any more Commissioner comment? I got one. I went on, I had, at the last meeting, we were talking about the hospital and about the part they owe. I did say, all that money is for going toward the hospital. How can you owe something when all you done was took it out of one part? We have used, have a hundred percent when we got in trouble. Well, I don't see where this, it's all over the books. Every budget, they talking about this part over. I want to see that took out, and I, I would like a motion for it to come out, because it, it's the same money. And I, did they ever say anything about when they going to send us? The, the papers for us to get started on this? I got the paper.
Come backwards and ease my frustration here, and I can ask you, Commissioner. No, they should have been here at this meeting, uh, to give you that number. And then you guys would give them direction as to whether or not to, uh, to get a contract in place for that number, or you wanted more negotiations. If not, um, you're waiting for the number. USDA is waiting for the number. I'm waiting for the number. And I, 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 they got a quote here last week, and then, you know, it, it was high. Some of the numbers I questioned on it, and then they started to tell me things that, well, it might have included the old building. And I said, look, just, just straighten this out. Get this done and get a number to the board. And so, uh, I'm going to send an email to, a very specific email to Mr. Cannington, explaining what the board wants, when they want it. And hopefully they will be here at the next meeting to present that estimated cost to this board of county commissioners.
I would, I would like for you to get in and bring the cost of that thing. We'd been, we've been asking, we've been asking, so we want the cost of that thing at the next meeting.
I will.
It, it, it don't make, it don't take that long to find out no number.
Have they changed the building in any way, Michael?
There's talk about.
Was adding to the cost?
Yes, that's another thing I have to talk to them about. There was talk about adding a procedure room and something else which was not part of the original plan. And I don't think was authorized by this board.
That's correct. That's correct.
You tell them we want what we authorized.
And not all these other hoops and stuff. Don't add no more to the cost. I mean, just leave the project as was approved by the board and, and bring back the new numbers. That's all we want. We don't want no revision and all the bells and the whistles that everybody wants to throw in there. Bring us back what we approved and let's move on.
Yeah, so we approved that. We, we, and we know that it going to be up a little bit from the stone. I mean, that, I'm looking for that to be a little higher, but all that added, all that add in, no. We didn't give them permission to do it. And they should have told us, they, they got to come before they vote in us, before they get, do something like that.
And Commissioner, Chairman, to address the first part of your statement, I, I would recommend rather than seeking, uh, a motion from the board on that funding, would you give me the option to talk to finance and talk to the county's CPA auditor and see what he would recommend, and I bring that back to the board? And you guys decide that's the option of, of path you want to go down or not?
I'm good with that, but I, I do agree with the chairman. It is, it needs to get paid, or it needs to be rolled out and forgiven, but it needs to be straight before we move forward building this hospital. It don't need to be.
Carried on the books like that forever.
Yes, it needs to be cleared out, one way or the other. Even if it's paid, it needs to get cleared.
It's not, Mr. Chairman, it's normally something we don't take up under Commissioner County.
Yes.
I, I agree too, but it's not, you know, I don't want to set precedent by taking action under the commission of county.
Yeah, that's why.
I didn't make that motion, sir.
Yes, it's not a motion. If the board doesn't mind me doing the research, I'll just do the research and then bring it back. Then you could decide. I'll put it.
Well, do the research and bring it back to, that, that not. Make it a, a agenda item, put it on the agenda for the next meeting and bring it back to. That way, we ain't made no motion. All right, any more public comment?
Time to go eat.
Possum time.
One thirty, everybody, one thirty.